Until we've started the recording.
They can bring it back up if they want.
All right. Good evening. I will call into session the City Council Study Session for Public Works and Community Development, Special Focus Area, January 22 at 5:30. Let's see, public participation, public participation, the Auburn City Council Study Session, scheduled for today, will be held in person and virtually. Virtual participation link, to view the meeting virtually, please click... All right, let's get the grease in the water. To view the meeting virtually, please click the below link or call the meeting at the phone number listed below. To listen to the meeting by phone or Zoom, please call the number listed. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Amer?
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Rakes?
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor? Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
Unknown.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman Le?
Here.
All right. So tonight, we have an executive session. The City Council will adjourn into an executive session pursuant to the following statutes. RCW 42.30.110, one and B, to consider the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. And RCW 42.30.110, parentheses, one, II, and III. To discuss with legal counsel litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by the city. And to discuss the legal risks of a proposed action when public discussion of the litigation or legal risks is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. And RCW 42.30.110, parentheses, one, parentheses, G, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. The total length of time for the executive session is 40 minutes. We shall return at that time. In addition to myself, Mayor Backus, the City Council, the Director of Public Works, Ingrid Godd, Assistant Public Works Director, Jacob Sweeting, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management, Candace Martenson, and outside counsel, Bob Strubeck from Foster Garvey, will be required to attend. Also required in attendance is Doug Ruth, Senior City Staff Attorney. So, and I understand we will be meeting up at the Executive Conference Room. Okay. So, 40 minutes, 6:15. All right, so we will head up right now.
No, where am I going? I'm not thinking.
A little warmer. You know, I had to go through that, almost getting my property taken away from me because the city of Walawala wanted my five acres. And I was not about to sell it. So I went through what we talked about tonight.
So we will, uh, we'll call the meeting to order after commencing, concluding with the executive session. So next on the agenda, do we have any agenda modifications?
No Chair, we do not.
All right. Announcement, reports, and presentations. We do have a short ready report out from Councilmember Kate Baldwin.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Brown. Within the Ready Coalition, the group has been continuing to meet on a twice a month basis. Using that time to go through and work on developing the skillsets to continue the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion within the city. In our recent session, we were working on understanding the mechanics behind decision-making powers and the different models that can be incorporated for decision-making and how by selecting the model that can affect the process for how things can come forward within an organization and how equity can be incorporated into that. So really great sessions in that arena. Part of the work for understanding the models for decision-making is being preparing and training and getting the group ready to be developing a work plan. So being able to aggregate different ideas and opportunities for the city and then go through a phase of consolidating, prioritizing, categorizing, and filtering those into something that will be achievable within the coming year. And so things to look forward to in the coming months would be the Coalition will be working on developing that work plan. So going into that phase and I believe also looking at an opportunity to codify the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, which currently exists as a department within the city, but to give that the same ordinance backing that we have with our other departments. So to create permanence for that to continue to persist into the future. So that's what we've been working on, great progress, great involvement, and always learning new things through that organization. So thanks to the mayor's leadership for helping drive the coalition. Thanks to all the participants who make the time to participate and particularly to staff for showing up and sharing their voices. So, update.
Thank you Councilmember Baldwin. And I would just add to that report that it is truly impressive, the dedication of everybody on that coalition. From, you know, frontline workers to frontline supervisors to directors and again the mayor. So we look forward to working together on that. Next on the agenda, we have-
Deputy Mayor, we do have that one written comment that I wanted to get on the record.
Okay.
Due to that unusual ordinance that we have, we received one written comment. It was from a Jasper Kiara. And they expressed concerns regarding the condemnation of real property located at 3240 Auburn Way South, including taxes, loss of business during construction hours, and damage to their property.
Thank you very much. So moving the agenda forward, we now have a report from the Police Department. Chief Collier, can you please come for?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, good evening Council. For the record, Chief Mark Collier, with me is Assistant Chief Sam Betts. Go through this, this is a, just an overview of the department. If at any time, it's supposed to be high level, thousand-foot level. So anytime if anybody has any questions, just get my attention, I'll try and stop talking long enough to answer it. All right. I just messed this up. Sorry, I'm trying to get this to go through.
Here comes Chrissy.
It's in a PDF format and I'm not used to doing that. Settings. Thank you. All right. So to start off with, just a high overview of our budget. And I was informed by Finance Director Jamie Thomas. My numbers are a little bit off because I did forget to include some of the budget amendments and grants, grant acceptance that we had last year. But close estimate, we are, our budget for the PD is a little over thirty-seven million for 2024. About seventy-one percent of that is for salary, wages, and personnel benefits. About thirteen percent, we call them inter-fund services. So that's we interact with other city departments like IT, Public Works. So those are payments that we'll make out for various things on there. Our supplies are only one percent of our budget. So that's our kind of general operating costs, you know, uniforms, what have you. And then various services and charges that we have, they can include legal fees, a lot of our subscriptions for things we use in our investigations, programs, things like that. We have to renew our, our membership yearly. So that's usually included in that fifteen percent. For the overall budget, we are a general fund agency. We're about thirty-seven percent of the general fund budget. Where that fits in for the overall city budget, we're about sixteen percent. So out of the departments that are funded in the general fund, we're a little over a third there. We are authorized one hundred and eighteen commission staff, twenty-two non-commission staff. We are, I'd like to think we're a little light in the administration. We only have seven administration-level officers within the department. The rest are sergeants or regular commissioned officers that handle day-to-day responses. Without going through this, our largest division is the Patrol Division. We have twenty detectives that I'll get into later and I'll talk, as I talk about more of the divisions. Our recruiting and hiring is one of our biggest things that we've been going through. And I put this slide in there just to show how much we've worked with HR. So since 2022, we've hired forty-six new total employees within the agency, including nine lateral officers and twenty-nine entry-level officers. Most people don't focus on it, but five of the positions we've hired are front office staff. And they only have ten total staff up front. So fifty percent of them have left the, the agency. We did hire two new evidence custodians and then one police wellness program designer. And then currently, we're still holding current at six vacancies. And we have several candidates in the pipeline in various stages that we are working through. So I want to bring your attention kind of where we are at in 2020 as far as experience levels within the department. This is, as you look, about twenty-nine percent of all of our staff was between zero and four years of experience. Twenty-one percent between five and nine. So about half the department was nine years or less and the rest were kind of spread out. But as we moved into 2024, forty-three percent of our department is less than four years of service. And then twenty percent are between that five and nine-year range. So we are a young department, experience-wise. We, we have run the gamut of people that we've hired as far as age. So I'm talking about strictly experience there. We, it came later to us, you know, it's in police circles, the great resignation retirement, starting in 2019. That came a little bit later to us and other agencies, but we did, we are still recovering from that. As we've talked about, I think, before to the council, when I get a police vacancy, if I can't hire a lateral, it takes me about a year to get an entry level through the hiring process, through the academy, and up to speed. Where we have really been able to improve on that is we got back to a point in our staffing where we could send a commission officer back to the academy to act as a training officer. And that guarantees us a spot in every class in the academy. Before, we were waiting anywhere from five to six months, once we hired them, before we could get an academy spot. So that has really helped us fill out our staffing. It is an attractor for people trying to get into the business because I believe there's only between seven and eight agencies in the state that send a tac officer to Burien. And so when you're guaranteed a spot for your agency in every class, people that are interested in this job, they know that they're going to get in there and get through the academy a lot quicker. So we have four divisions within the department. Our Patrol Division, like I said before, is the largest. It has two commanders that are assigned there. And then we have a commander overseeing the other three, which is Investigations, Administrative Services, and Inspection Services. Assistant Chief Betts is lucky enough to oversee the daily operations of all these divisions. And then he reports directly to me on all that. When I, when we talk about inspectional services, it is a one-person department. I'll kind of go into what they work on a little bit later in the presentation. So our Patrol Division, it is, like I said, it is the largest division in the department. We have fifty-seven patrol officers and eight sergeants assigned to the division. Three patrol K9s. And then our school resource officers and our mall officers are also assigned to that division. That's where their main supervisors come from. They all work a four-ten-hour shift. It's contractual. And we found it is probably the best overall for deployment and maintaining officer wellness. And so they work two different crews. One crew either works Tuesday through Friday or one is Friday through Monday. And that Friday is our training day. Every Friday in the department throughout the year is some sort of training going on. But that's when we can get everybody through mandatory training that the state puts out, mandatory city training that we have, and all their qualifications they have to go through on a yearly basis to remain certified. You know, that includes like CPR, first aid, TASER training, things of that nature. So all those are covered on our Friday training. By contract, they bid for shifts every year. They're bid by seniority. And they rotate their days off every four months. And so it helps, it is a good selling point for us that every other year, you will get the summer off. And every other holiday season, Thanksgiving and Christmas, New Year's, you will be off. And so-
The summer off.
What's that?
Not the entire summer.
Not the entire summer. Majority of the summer.
Caught my attention a long time ago.
Sorry, weekends off during the summer. What I've found over my career is it actually, I would rather work weekends during the summer because during the week, everything is less crowded. So, but that's just personal. I'm here for reasons. And then we work for shifts throughout the day to maintain that twenty-four-hour-a-day coverage. And so there will always be a crew overlapping. It's part of an accreditation requirement for us to have overlapping crews so that somebody is always available on the street to answer calls for service. And so we are divided into, the city is divided into six patrol districts. Each patrol district is based on the call volume in a certain area, the population, geographical features that enable us to respond as quickly as possible. Every district also is subdivided into, we call them routing districts, reporting districts. So that we, if we need to look at data, we can look at specific blocks, specific locations. And it helps pinpoint, you know, if, if there's something happening at a smaller location other than a larger full-time district. The officers bid for the district that they want to work for the year. It helps them maintain ownership of that district so they get to know the problems in the district. The people get to know them so they can, they have knowledge of where issues are happening. And it gets them more in contact with the citizens as they move through working weekends, working days. They can change their hours a little bit if they, you know, want to make contacts with the citizens. We do have three substations that are available to us to use. There is one on Lee Hill. There's one on the Muckleshoot Tribe is, lend us access. It's right across the street from the casino and the Old Key Bank Building. And then one down at the mall. And then we do have one office space that I presented last year to this council at the Coppergate Apartments that they donated for us to use that up there as well.
Could I ask a question?
Councilmember-
Chief, at the Muckleshoot Substation, how often is a police officer there? Because I've had some constituents in our, up there in that area that ask me because they've gone over there and there hasn't been someone there. So are they just there to do reports and stuff like that or how often?
Yeah, it's, it's office space. They don't have a, like a front counter with somebody always available there. But we do have an officer that's assigned to the tribe. So he uses that space as well. He's also able to use the King County portion of the Muckleshoot Tribal Police outside the city limits if he needs to use that. So it's a, there's space there for other portions of the tribe that, that we have interaction with as far as like the tribal adult protective services, things of that nature. They're, it's not, it's their version of CPS as well. They operate out of that office.
Okay, thank you, very much for the update.
That map was very small, so I apologize. You should be able to see that okay in your, in your packet. As far as our uniform, our standard uniform is what I'm wearing now. It's a jumpsuit uniform. We do have our, they're called LAPD blue. They're almost a blackened uniform. They are wool uniforms, those are dress uniforms. They are not really practical for everyday use. They, they are dry-clean only usually. They shrink if they get wet. Come across biohazards, they, they're problematic to clean. So they are, for us, they're a dress uniform that we can wear on special occasions. So what you, what you'll see is our jumpsuit. It's a one-piece, it's a wash-and-wear uniform. We do have to match all the requirements the state requires as far as name, you know, that we are a police agency, distinctive patches that have police on them so that we're readily identifiable as police officers when we're wearing them. And our duty belt, I listed kind of just a lot of things we carry on our duty belt. A lot of those have been moved to our external vest carrier. It does save a lot of injuries. When I first started, we didn't have the external carriers. Everybody, you had to keep everything on your duty belt. We had a lot of back injuries because it's a lot of weight. And so the move to the, the outer vest carriers and being able to move that stuff, it's much easier. The weight's carried in your shoulder. So I can't remember the last back injury we had in the department. So really saved us, yes. And so these are some of the mandatory things that we are required to carry. The wadi camera is a required carry. Anytime we are taking any type of enforcement action, even our detectives, if they're taking enforcement action, they have to throw a vest carrier- Even our detectives, if they're taking enforcement action, they have to throw a vest carrier on that identifies them as a police officer. They are required to use body cameras as well during enforcement activities.
Can you demonstrate?
Body camera or enforcement activities?
The body, the belt?
Well, the body camera itself, so if we turn it on, we do have to track the recording because it will start recording. I don't know if we want to do that in this recording.
No, I don't want you to demonstrate the camera. I just, you're right there and you're talking about everything that you got on there. And so I'm looking at you to see, okay, look at all this stuff he's got. Yeah. Because he said it's not hurting your back anymore, and so I can see why.
It's not hurting my back anymore. Doesn't it look great?
Thank you.
When you guys are fully loaded with all your equipment, what's the weight for the vest?
It can range anywhere from 25 to 30 pounds. We are constantly trying to modernize our equipment or the stuff we carry to reduce weight. And so, you know, but there are requirements, I mean, when I started, we didn't carry tourniquets. So we all have tourniquets that we carry on us, usually two, that have definitely come in handy. You know, body cameras, magazines, radios, things of that nature, all sorts. But when, once you're used to your vest, you don't, you know, it's like a second scan. You don't really notice the weight anymore. So in our patrol division, that's where the majority of the marked vehicles you'll see. Our main patrol vehicle right now is a Ford SUV. Ford has really stopped making other vehicles except for detective use or unmarked use. There are Chevy Tahos out there, but the market for vehicles has shrunk down considerably. There's really not too many sedans that are marketed for police use anymore. So our marked vehicles, they are required to have a light bar and siren. We have a mobile radio, the computers, the Axon camera system, and then printers in each car because everything is automated. There's no more handwriting infractions or anything like that. Everything's done through the computer system. We print the tickets, we upload them directly to the servers, to the court. So we don't have to turn in paper tickets or anything like that anymore. Just a thing on the mobile radios. So that is a service. So we actually, we pay a fee to the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network now for access to the radio network that was a King County ordinance when they upgraded a couple of years ago. That has driven our costs up considerably within the city. When you think about, on the old system, the King County radio system, we paid $6 for every radio that we had on the system. That price has gone up to $39 for every radio. And so it's a significant cost increase. We also had to, you know, voluntary mandatory, if you wanted to use the radio system, sign a maintenance agreement to maintain the radios. And so our radio costs have gone up considerably. A little bit out of our control. When we talk about patrol division and we talk about response times, we categorize our response four different priorities. Number one, priority one is a life-threatening. Our goal is answering those calls under four minutes. We have hovered the last several years right at four minutes on those calls, a little bit over. And then our priority two, three and four are the, priority two is a crime in progress. It could be hazardous, but it's not life-threatening. It's not like a shooting incident that's going on, but maybe somebody is, you know, there might be a fistfight or something like that going on. So that's priority two type call. Priority three is non-hazardous, it's not in progress. Priority four is that, you know, somebody calls in, hey, I saw somebody suspicious, or, you know, whatever the case may be where it's like information only, or they just want us to check the area to see if we can find anything. So that's the lowest priority for us. You know, the reality is that, as you've seen in our annual report, you will see the priority two, three, and four calls have gone up a little bit the last couple of years due to some staffing issues we faced and some legislative changes that require more officers per call that we go to. And so that has the effect, it doesn't have the biggest effect on the priority ones. But as you trickle down now, the lower priority calls, it will take us a little bit longer to get to those. And so I just threw out, I don't have 2023 stats yet, they are almost finished. But kind of where we are at as far as our calls for service, you will see a dramatic increase really over that six-year period, starting in 2020. And that's when we started moving a lot of our calls to online reporting. And so if you look at the average over six years, we've managed to drop calls that officers are responding to in the field, about 16, 16 and a half percent. Our arrest stats have gone down. They are rebounding from the COVID years where we couldn't make physical arrests and book anybody due to limitations of jail space. And then on the right, the pie chart is just kind of shows you how our calls for service are throughout the city. Our two districts is our biggest call volume. It is probably one of the most narrow. It's Auburn Way to the 277th from Main Street. So it's a narrow window. It's hard to divide it up any smaller without adding additional staff. But we will usually, when we have overlaps, we will double up that district with multiple officers that can respond to those calls. It also encompasses our station. And so all of our, I, we call them in-station reports. People that come to the station and want to make a report, that's in the two districts, so it will get added to those calls. So it will show an increase from that. So our investigations division, we have one commander, three sergeants, and 20 detectives. We divide that into three different units, major crimes, property crimes, and our special investigations unit. Our major crimes handles things like homicides, robberies, sexual assaults, felony assaults, property crimes, burglaries, vehicle thefts, other types of thefts that rise to the felony level. And our special investigation units, they have, their primary focus is narcotics, gangs, and vice-type crimes like prostitution, things of that nature. And so I just gave you some information on kind of where we're at the last couple of years, our five-year average for each division, where they're at. We're kind of, we've done well the last couple of years. The crime rate has gone down. Overall, we still see some increases in certain sections regarding vehicle theft. But overall, we have been a little bit of a decrease the last couple of years. And so when we talk about major crimes, so we have eight detectives that are assigned to that one sergeant, major crimes. We have, we call them cold case homicide detectives. Their primary mission is to handle like unsolved homicides, things like that, that we could have some follow-up work to do. But they are also assigned new cases as well, they just don't get as many. And then four detectives will get the majority of the current cases, those active cases that come in on a daily basis. And then two detectives are assigned to primarily the felony-level DV cases, some misdemeanor follow-up for domestic violence-type cases. And I kind of put where our vacancies are right now in that unit. As we flesh out our staffing, we will fill those vacancies. We actually are moving two detectives over here, one in the middle of February and then one March 1st, back to that unit. This is kind of our numbers. These are reported annually to the FBI for, and they'll be included in like the Crime in Washington reports, the FBI reports as far as what Auburn has seen. We did have 13 homicides in 2022, which was higher than multiple years. That went down, I believe we are only at, I think, seven last year. So there was a spike last year, I mean, spike in 2022, down again in 2023. And I'll have more of that when we do the annual reports, probably between March and April of this year. Because we have seen some increases in robbery, but decreases in other sections of these types of cases.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, let me get there. In, can you go back a slide really quick, please? No, that's fine. So in your list there, you've got homicide, robbery, forcible rape, aggravated assault. Where does property crime lie in any of that?
So that will be in the, when I get to the property crimes. Yeah, I'll show you those stats as well. So this is just our major crimes unit, what they're handling. So our property crimes, there's one sergeant, there are, we have five property crimes detectives that are assigned there. We currently have three vacancies. So this is where the two that are moving over in the next couple of months go. This was one of those decisions we had to make based on priority of where the need was, what King County was filing at the time. And so as we build back staff and are able to fill out those, we are filling out the property crimes unit again. So here's the stats where we're at. Like I said, I don't have 2023 yet. But for 2022, you see our burglary, burglaries climb significantly. The fraud, forgery cases were above just a little bit. Vehicle theft, if you look at the trend over the last several years, it has risen dramatically since 2020. Larceny, that's your felony-level thefts. And then thefts from vehicle has dropped quite a bit. I would think because now they're stealing the whole car. So it's, can be a little, we don't really have any explanation of why the theft from vehicles are not being reported in such high numbers.
Yes, councilmember dropped that.
Chief, do you have a map of the hotspots of where most of the crimes of property?
So.
Robberies or cars and stuff like that?
On our department website, GIS, we have, you can zero down on what crimes have occurred this last week, the last month. I don't, I'm trying to think how far back you can go on that map. But we are able to pull up, you know, reporting districts, and we just search by year.
Could you send us a copy of that? Or do we just go on there and do it? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's all online. So there's a lot of searchable fields, so you can kind of pick and choose what crime you're interested in and, you know, weed out all the others. And you can see over time where the majority of them are taking place. Okay, so our special investigation unit, it's currently one sergeant and five detectives. We have two vacancies there. We do have one detective that's assigned to the Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team. And the Tacoma, let's put Tacoma, it's Tacoma, Narcotics Enforcement Team. Tacoma does not take part in that task force anymore. But they are DEA task force. We have agreements to provide officers to those task force. They are responsible for like the large-scale operations that impact our region, state. Because their investigations of the main players will sometimes take them on a national level and sometimes to other countries. And so it is important for us to have people assigned to those because things that happen on the state level, the national level, have that effect in Auburn. And so they eradicate or help get rid of the main dealers that are bringing their product into Auburn that our main SIU investigators are looking at. All right, our administrative services division, so we have one commander who oversees our records unit, our traffic unit, and our community services unit. So the records unit, we did some reorganization in 2021 and moved that unit under administrative services. We had some contraction a little bit. But we moved the traffic unit and community services unit under that commander because those are the kind of the quality-of-life issues instead of the day-to-day operations that we do. So that involves like our CRT, our Community Response Team, our bicycle officers, animal control. And so all those things kind of intermix on a daily basis. Traffic units can go out, and that includes the officers we have assigned up there and two parking so they can focus on where the need is. And they, they focus a lot of their additional duties on complaints that will come in in certain areas. So, and then part of the duties of the traffic unit right now is also our speed camera enforcement. They are required to monitor that and process those in a timely fashion. And our records unit, so they are, the people you see at the front counter, they have two record supervisors that oversee them. They do all the crime transactions, so those are warrants, stolen auto entries, missing person entries, things of that nature. They enter court warrants that we receive from both, from our local court and from King County Superior Court, if there's no contact orders, things of that nature. They also do fingerprinting for CPLs. They will issue those out of our front office. Firearms background checks and transfers. And they will, are one of the inputs for public records requests along, when I get to our inspectional service division. But they handle the majority of their requests that come to our department from the city clerk's office. I want to talk about our traffic enforcement. So they do enforcement throughout the city. We do have two collision investigators, and that's their primary response, is to handle all the collisions that occur in the city. They are subject to call-out for any fatality or serious injury collisions. So you will see, that was one of the reasons, if you have not seen it, a pickup truck is actually assigned to our traffic unit because he has all sorts of gear for collision investigations stored in his truck. So very useful and has a lot more gear than what we can carry in our SUV for that. So like I said, they respond to online complaints, they do the Speed Zone camera enforcement, and then parking enforcement as well. Community services unit has the four bicycle officers, four CRT members. The tribal officer that is contracted through the tribe is supervised out of that office. We have a full-time training and accreditation officer. The one officer that we assign to the state training academy is overseen through that office. And our two animal control officers as well are overseen out of that community service unit. So when we talk about training for the department, because that's, so we are mandated to have 24 hours of in-service training every year that is by the state. So they, like I spoke about earlier, they will cover all sorts of topics like de-escalation, CPR, various diversity, equity, inclusion training, CIT training. On, every year, we have a two-hour block that the state puts out for, you know, it'll be on something regarding CRT, whether it's suicide awareness, we, training on like recognizing symptoms of like autism and stuff so officers are familiar with if they see something, so an encounter won't immediately get bad because maybe they see somebody who's familiar with the term like stimming. Can present strange to the normal citizens who may call in. But officers receive training to recognize those symptoms. So things of that nature that they will go through on a yearly basis. We provide six two-hour sessions for defensive tactics throughout the year. 10 hours of range training, 10 hours of patrol tactics, building searches. That is a, the patrol tact is a state requirement to continue that. That can be something basic is like retraining on basic vehicle stops. How do you make contact, you know, how do you put somebody at ease during a traffic stop? How should you approach them? But, you know, introducing yourself, telling them what they're being stopped for, things of that nature. So we go through that every year. We do, and then we have 20 hours of in-service training where we can kind of set some of those training topics based on the need for certain years. So we will talk about all sorts of things, ethics, bias-based policing, legal updates as needed. Under new state guidelines, we are required to go through EVOC training every two years. We were putting everybody through every three years. The state shortened that to two, so that, we are mandated to do that by the state if our department wants to engage in any type of pursuits. And there are some agencies that are unable to meet that two-year requirement, so they are not authorized to engage in pursuits for any reason.
Yes, councilmember.
The acronyms for that is?
I'm sorry, Emergency Vehicle Operations Course. Sorry. Let's see, yeah, no other acronyms. Yeah, so we do that training up at Pacific Raceways. So we rent the track every year for that. CPR, first aid training, we are mandated every other year. We do have some available for newer officers. We also go through a course for, it's kind of modeled off military, but is a combat medic, or combat, like trauma training to use a turn- or combat like trauma training to use of tourniquets, how to stop gunshot wounds, things of that nature that they may encounter. So it's, it's more first, it's more than basic first aid that you would get out of first aid class, but we have been very successful because we are usually the first ones on the scene of a traumatic incident prior to fire department getting there. One of the things that I didn't mention before is every vehicle in our fleet does have a AED, a defibrillator in the car, and so officers are able to deploy that. Every officer does carry Narcan as well. So we do use that quite frequently. So crisis intervention training as well. And then we also put our officers through reality-based training every year. And that is the practical application of what we've trained them all year on building searches, things of that nature, use of force if it's appropriate. Every scenario we have can have the out where it's not a force outcome. So that means if they engage a person and talk to them and find out, you know, during the scenario, they may find out the person just wants to, you know, they're having a mental health crisis. So there's no need to go hands-on with somebody. So it's designed to, for officers to start learning how to use their voice, how to interact with people, talk to them. And so those scenarios have that outcome built into them, that there's no need for force if you work through a scenario correctly.
Can I say something? As a part was volunteered last year with the upper police department where I was part of scenario that they have mental health. I didn't know. I learned it, that when they respond, there are nothing they can do. I'm the crazy lady there, the only thing they will be doing is talk to me, make sure I'm safe. They had six scenario, I still remember last year for four months, all the department went through life scenario, which was learning a lot. Sorry, I had to add it.
Thank you for your contribution.
So that is kind of an overview of the training section. We do do a lot of training if officers are interested in like a career path in supervision, in investigations, because there are trainings that are on a national level, on a state level, local level, that we encourage officers as part of their goals, we'll talk to them, we'll seek out training for them that maybe we don't have in-house and pay for them to go to these types of trainings to help them on whatever career path they choose. So inspectional services, so this is a one-person unit, so it is a commander who's assigned to this unit, so it's currently Commander Fero. So this, this unit handles all, they are the clearinghouse for like internal investigations, supervisory investigations, supervisory inquiries, use of force incidents, vehicle pursuits, commendations, our grant management and outside investigations and public records requests all filter through this office. That doesn't mean this one person is doing all the investigations themselves, but they track all of complaints that come into our office, commendations, everything. So we have one, one person that is responsible for all the documentation. And then we, we will assign out, you know, if it's a internal investigation, we can assign it out to another commander to investigate, an outside investigator if need be. But that's, this is the office that all that is filtered through. So regional teams and task forces that we take part in, Valley SWAT, our civil disturbance unit, the Valley Independent Investigation Team, that is the force investigation team that will investigate officer-involved shootings or in custody deaths. We are a member of that, the Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team and the Tacoma Narcotics Enforcement Team. So we partner up with the majority of, like Kent, Renton, Taquilla, Fedaway, Port of Seattle. We do officers assistance on things like Black Diamond, Pacific Outgoing on a, as-needed So every, it's nice to have a regional approach. We do a lot of the same trainings, which is nice, especially with like Valley SWAT. We do active shooter training, the trainers come from the Valley SWAT team, so all the officers in the valley are getting the same training so that if we have a major incident here and I call other local agencies in for assist or the on-duty supervisor does, those officers will have the same training and they will respond the same as we do. So it, it really helps, you know, we are, we are not alone down in Auburn. So we take a regional approach to that. So Valley SWAT itself, I name the cities again, each agency provides one commander and six operators. So they, you know, they do fleet planned operations for, you know, narcotics, arrest-type situations, and they will respond to in-progress incidents as well. We have several vehicles that are owned by the team. We have one, the Peacekeeper, or not Peacekeeper, the Bearcat, which I provided a picture of, that is currently stationed in Auburn, so we can pick that up, bring it to an incident while SWAT team members will arrive, so they can respond directly to the incident. That was one of the, when the council approved a couple of years ago, take-home vehicles for our SWAT personnel, that's so they can respond directly to the incident. They don't have to come here, pick up all their gear. So time-wise, it's a, it's a large saver for that. Our Valley Civil Disturbance Unit, again, the same cities are involved, so they respond to protests, planned events, riots, which, not too many of those thankfully. We have done dignitary protection as well in other cities that need our assistance. We've gone to Seattle on occasion, Bellevue on occasion as well. Well, Green, yeah, Green River College was, our entire agency was up there when President Biden was here, so, but there was contingencies for everything. Yes. The narcotics task forces that I talked about earlier, they all have a DEA contingent. DEA does provide funding for them as well, not full funding, but they do provide some. And so the two different task forces, the Valley, so it includes Auburn, Kent, Renton, Fedaway, Taquilla, and WSP. Seattle was part of that, they pulled out of that, they refused to do some indemnity language, so they pulled out recently. The Tacoma, Tacoma includes Auburn, Puyallup, Bonny Lake, Lakewood, and Pierce County Sheriff's Office and DOC. Tacoma pulled out as well because there's some language about indemnification of those task force officers that they didn't agree with, so. So regionally, when we talk about Valley Communications, that is the regional 911 center that Auburn is an owner city of. The mayor is on the administrative board. I sit on the operations board of that. They do have their own director and budget that they work through. But when we talk about dispatch services, if somebody calls 911, it goes through Valley Communications. So their, their center is basically, it's in South Kent, it is right on the border with Auburn, just off at 277. When we talk about SCORE, it's the South Correctional Entity, it's located in Des Moines, it's a regional misdemeanor facility that Auburn, again, is one of the six owner cities of, I listed them. So that is where all of our misdemeanor in custody people, that's where we transport them to. They're very good, they have their own staff, their own director, they are probably the top misdemeanor facility in the state, one of the best in the nation. They are, do really good, they are on the cutting edge of providing services. We've talked about that before in front of the council, in front of the court. If you're in custody, they provide a lot of treatment services for people that are in custody to help them for addiction services, things of that nature, mental health service, whatever they need. They are in the process of contracting with DSHS for bed space up there, so it will also be some, have some capacity for that as well. So it's a, it's a good facility. I wish it was a little closer to town, but it is a good facility. And then the Police Advisory Committee, just so everybody is aware, so it's about 25 members representing all aspects of the Auburn community. So they do provide input on policies, activity of the PD, they provide feedback from the community on any police-related issue. We have begun involving them in our promotional process to sit on the boards as well to get that other aspect. One thing about the PAC is that, you know, I'm there to listen to what they have to say, and they do not hesitate to speak their feelings. And so, but, but they do have a common purpose and that's to make our community better. So that's kind of a brief overview of the PAC. And then just some challenges ahead for the PD as a whole, we're still moving forward with hiring retention. We will continue to have just the normal attrition of retirements and things of that nature. And so I think we're, I'm hoping, hopeful that we're on the tail end and we will not see the large retirement resignation that we saw the last couple of years. That was a first in my 33-year career that I've seen, so hopefully that will not happen Some of our challenges is our facilities, we'll talk about that more down the road with the council. The workload, our need to increase kind of the unobligated patrol time as far as the proactive work that we're doing with officers. I kind of, the graph I showed, just the lack of tenure can create challenges for mentoring and training because we have lost that middle group. And so it'll get better as our staff ages and now they are the middle group able to mentor newer officers. So it is, but it has been challenging for us. And then we are working on developing the succession plan for future leaders within the department. So we've got an outline policy and then that is a constant developing plan. And that was it, so.
Do we have any, yes, council member Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Chief, Assistant Chief, how often do you meet with your command staff?
So we see majority of sergeants daily, but we meet as a leadership team every other month. And that's everybody, that's all supervisors within the department, all of our, I guess, OICs, acting sergeants that are able to attend, those are the ones that will be in charge if a sergeant is absent for whatever reason, and our record supervisors. So we all meet as one big group, kind of go over the challenges that we're facing, make sure we're all on the same page with, if there's a change in policy, making sure everybody's on the same page as well, so.
And then my question.
And then we do meet as a command staff, we meet once a week.
Okay. And then to follow up, you had mentioned there's six patrol districts, how many officers do you have in each district during each shift?
So there's always, there's always at least one.
Okay.
So our minimum staffing right now, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, is a sergeant plus seven, so there has to be seven officers working. Outside of those hours, it's a sergeant and six. So, so there's always at least one officer in every patrol district. During the overlap times, it just depends on how many officers are there, but we have to have a minimum of seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cheryl Wrights.
Hi, Chief, Kelly, you're, so when you talked about your resource officers, do they stay at the same school or do they rotate? How many schools?
So they, they usually have, so they're, because we assign them to the school district, the school district will deploy them how they want. They are usually assigned a primary high school to each officers, and then they will go to like the feeder schools for that high school, so like they maybe also assign Cascade and then the corresponding primary schools as well. So they will go to every school as needed in the school district, they're primarily assigned to the high schools.
Okay. So it's up to the district and where they?
Yeah, they're, they're available basically throughout the day to answer any calls in any of the schools.
Okay.
So, but they're usually primary, working out of one of the high schools.
Yes, council member Kate Paul.
Yeah. Well, first, as a quick aside, I just wanted to offer my condolences to the department for the passing of Record Specialist Jean Price. She had been with the city for, I think, almost 28 years?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So I know so often it's our office staff that give us the culture for our different business departments, you know, they remember the birthdays, they're the ones that greet you when you come in and when you're headed out. And so I just wanted to express that for you both and for the department. And then on the matter of the, you know, materials and presentation, I know a lot of our incoming council members had been interested in how we can continue to work and address crime and increase safety in our community. I know one of the big elements that we had in recent years with council was having the take-home vehicle program. How many more years will it be until we're fully transitioned with that?
We are due, I believe our first batch is coming in April. They, they have been ordered, so they are at the outfitters, the first batch. We are hoping to get that first section that council had authorized, I believe it's a five-year.
Six-year.
Six-year implementation, but last year's, it's passed. We are also at the mercy of kind of the market. There was a delay through Ford that caused delays in us receiving the first batch. And so we do have that kind of plotted out with Fleet Services on how to order those.
Right on.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much, Chief Collier and Deputy Chief, we appreciate the good report and I guess your excuse then.
Thank you.
So next up, we have our special focus area of Public Works and Community Development. And for that, I will turn this over to council member and chair, Tracy Taylor.
Fantastic. Okay, so the purpose of this discussion is to inform the council and the public of the overall status of the city's capital project program managed by our Public Works Department Engineering Services Division. I'd like to call up Ingrid and?
Yes, I'm actually going to pass that over to my staff.
Fantastic.
Presentation, so Jacob Sweeting, our Assistant Director, and Matt Larson, who is one of our senior project engineers, will be going through the presentation.
Good evening. One minute, we'll get the presentation going.
Hello, once again for the record, Jacob Sweeting, City Engineer, Assistant Director of Public Works.
And Matt Larson, Senior Project Engineer.
So yes, we are here tonight to discuss the status, the capital project status and give you a wrap-up of the 2023 year-end and a preview of what's to come in 2024. So many of you have been through these discussions before, but some of you are new, so I'll go, I'll give you a little bit of background about how these work. Basically, once a quarter, we come to the city council and we give you an opportunity to have some information about our capital projects and the status that they're in. We give a report, a capital project status report, and give you the opportunity to give us feedback, ask questions. Background of what the Public Works Engineering Services Group does is we manage, amongst other things, we manage the city's capital projects that often range from being transportation projects, airport projects, utility projects, facilities projects, parks projects, and sometimes just miscellaneous different projects that need to be done for the city. So the capital product status or CPS as we call it, it's a report of the products that are currently in design or in construction by the capital products group. And in your packet, starting on page 46, is actually when the CPS report or matrix starts. And it is a printout basically that shows each capital project number, those numbers can be correlated to what you see in your budget documents. It's got the project name, a description of the project, and then it gives the project budget or cost, the anticipated construction schedule, and then some other information that's related to that capital project. So here, we have an opportunity, like we are tonight, we have an opportunity to walk through the CPS report. Typically, we just ask you if you have any questions on the report, if you look at it. Then we usually go through a presentation of a feature capital project, a project that has some significance that we want to share with you. And then nights like tonight, we're going to go over, like I said, the year and wrap up for 2023 and talk about what's coming in 2024. And I also just wanted to point out, and I don't know if this is going to work perfectly, but this information is also always available online. but this information is also always available online from our website. So we have a capital projects webpage and it lists contact information for people in the capital products group as well as it has a mapping tool that's produced in GIS. And this mapping tool gives you the opportunity to see in red here are projects that are in design and blue are projects that are in construction. And you can click on a project and some of these pop-ups aren't working perfectly on this computer, but it would give you that same information that you have in that CPS report and this is usually updated monthly. So instead of having to wait for that quarterly report, you could go on here. If you have questions about the project, you see something going on, you can always go on to this, this page and see what's happening. So an overview of what we did in 2023 in the capital products group. This is really just some statistics about the construction projects that were underway. Twenty twenty-three was a fairly light year for construction for us. We had a lot of big projects that were in design. They're going to move into construction in this year or in early 2025. So these numbers are a little bit lower than you typically see for things that were wrapped up in construction, but we preserved approximately almost twelve miles of pavement. That means where we grind and overlay the pavement or we apply the crack seals to the pavement. We installed almost four thousand feet of new or replaced sidewalk. We replaced curb ramps that don't meet current ADA requirements or where there was no curb ramp in the first place. At two locations, we added the rapid flashing beacons for pedestrian crossings. And then we replaced about fourteen hundred feet of stormwater conveyance facilities. So currently, the projects listed on the capital product status report, we have thirty-seven total projects, twenty-nine are currently in the design phase and eight are in the construction phase, with a total project value for all those projects of approximately a hundred billion dollars. So now I'm going to pass it over to Matt. He's going to talk about the more significant projects that we have underway in construction in 2024.
Thanks. Yeah, so like Jacob said, we have quite a few projects coming into the construction phase this, this year. I did want to just highlight just a few of them. Don't need to go through all of them, but these are ones that are more forward-facing, things that have, you know, maybe higher impact for the traveling public, things that you might receive questions about, things like that. So the first one is the Lake Taps Parkway Summer Taps Highway Preservation Project. This one replaces the top two inches of the roadway pavement. We call it a grind and overlay. This area is, in the Lakeland Hills area, it's the, like the project name describes, Lake Taps Parkway. So from Lakeland Hills Way to Summer Taps Highway intersection and then south towards the, the city limits at Sixteenth Street. And the next project is A Street Loop. So this one is on page forty-eight of your, of your packet if you're, if you're tracking. But this one, this one provides a new roadway connection, eastbound, one-way, eastbound roadway connection between effectively South Division Street and A Street Southeast. We anticipate breaking ground on this one next month and construction completed by the summer. All right, so then D Street Southeast, Twenty-third Street Storm Improvements. This is more than just a storm improvement project. This is, this is, has storm water utilities, sewer, sewer utility replacements, and then also quite a bit of roadway preservation work as well. This is, you can see it takes several different location, site locations, all in the same general area around the Cedarlands Park vicinity between A Street Southeast and Cedarlands. Currently, this, this work is currently in construction. They're working on the D Street site between Twenty-first and Twenty-fourth currently installing utility work. And we anticipate this, we're very hopeful that we can get this one completed by the end of this construction season, so by the end of the summer. All right, Coal Creek Springs Transmission Main Replacement Project. This one is in the Game Farm Park area. We, we presented on this project in the past, but this one is really going to be starting construction very heavy here in the coming months. We are currently waiting for the bridge materials to be fabricated. So this is a water main replacement, replaces a hundred-year-old water main. It's take, that currently crosses underneath the White River and we're building a, effectively a utility bridge over the White River that's going to double as a pedestrian connection between the two parks. And we're really excited about it. We don't get the opportunity to build bridges very often, so we're really, really excited about this one. And, and the bridge, like I said, we're waiting for the fabrication of materials, for the bridge materials themselves. Generally speaking, I think we're scheduled the bridge delivery in the June timeframe. So, so this, we're hopeful to get this one completed this year as well. The runway and taxiway improvement and, oh, yeah. Oh, sorry, yes, I skipped one. Nope, you're good. R Street Preservation, so this one is also near the Game Farm Park area. This is the R Street Preservation. We're preserving the roadway from, from Thirty-third to Thirty-seventh, which is basically from Game Farm Park down to the White River Bridge. And this one patches and replaces the top two inches of roadway pavement, some, some roadway restriping, channelization, and new street lighting. And we're also improving the non-motorized access through here by building a, a shared use path, basically, on the corridor. And I should mention on that one too, we anticipate breaking ground this spring with construction through summer.
For the non-motorized multi-use path, would that be as an edge of the roadway or would that be sidewalk?
Um, yeah, so, so it's a, it's a, it is a buffered multi-use path. So it's, it's, it's I believe like four or five foot buffer between where the roadway is and then the shared use path. So it's effectively a sidewalk, but it's got a buffer space.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, councilmember.
No, the keyword first.
No.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
In the middle, at the same page, in the middle, are, are we planning on putting any type of plants or is there enough room for that on there to beautify that area?
This section of roadway does not have a raised median in this section of roadway. So, so no.
Thank you.
All right. And then the runway taxiway improvement and RSA grading, obviously this one is at the airport. And this one upgrades the taxiway and runway lighting, extends the runway safety area on the south end, and then it preserves the existing runway and taxiway pavement. We are anticipating, so this one obviously requires a shutdown of the airport and we're anticipating that in basically the month of May. And we've been coordinating very closely with the airport.
And this is a full closure of the airport for the month?
Yes.
So I will, we'll clarify that a little bit. It's a closure of the runway. The airport, use of the hangars, all of that are still there, but you, they will not be able to take off and land.
Okay, thank you.
All right, C Street Preservation. So this is C Street Southwest between Main Street and about two thousand feet south of Fifteenth Street. If you're familiar with the GSA area down there, it goes to the intersection at GSA. This is, this is mainly a roadway preservation project, but it also has significant water storms, sanitary sewer improvements as well. This one, we are anticipating construction starting this spring, working through the summer. Our regional growth access improvement project. This one, this one's in the downtown area. You can see it's their Third Street Northeast, Auburn Ave to Auburn Way North. Basically affects three, three intersections. And this one has some non-motorized access improvements. It improves traffic operations and circulations through this area. There's some stormwater improvements for the new, the new roadway and, I'm sorry, not new roadway, but the rebuilt roadway, and then traffic signal upgrades and, and street lighting as well. And this one, we anticipate starting in the spring, but, but it has significant traffic signal equipment, which we, we know takes a long time to procure those, those materials. So we do anticipate this one, construction carrying into 2025. All right, and then the last project I wanted to highlight is our Garden Avenue Realignment Project. This one is effectively a new roadway, makes a, it's a new east-west connection. It removes the current connection from One Hundred Second Avenue, which is Garden Avenue, that connection to Eighth Street Northeast slash Southeast Three Twentieth in that, that area. Removes that connection, makes that a cul-de-sac and then makes, it reroutes that traffic to One Hundred and Fourth. And, and that one includes some, some fairly significant utility improvement, storm drainage to support the new roadway and then some water maintenance and main replacement work as well. And then that one is anticipated to start this spring and continue through the summer as well.
Go ahead.
Do you want to bring that slide back?
Yeah.
Is that the one that we had talked several years ago about getting the traffic off of One Oh Four and have them park in that area? Is that where that, there was some wetlands and stuff in there or not?
I'm not familiar with those discussions.
It was several years ago, we were talking about using that road, what is that?
One Hundred Second?
Yes.
So the intention is to close the connection between One Hundred Second and Three Twentieth through the Hill Road and that neighborhood traffic will then be routed directly to One Hundred and Fourth through the new roadway connection Southeast Three, East Three.
Okay, all right.
I will add, there's a separate parks project located just north of this to create a new park there that will have park parking.
That's probably what I'm, I'm thinking of, yeah, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, councilmember Paul.
With the Garden Avenue realignment, is that expected to help streamline traffic through that section of roadway?
It will help traffic on Three Twentieth. Currently, you have cars that stop trying to take a left onto One Hundred Second from eastbound Three Twentieth and block traffic potentially, so it'll eliminate that situation. There's a future project that is in design right now that will also improve the intersection of One Hundred and Fourth and the Hill Road, which will construct a roundabout. That's a few years out at least. We don't have construction funding yet, but it is under design.
So step one, this, step two.
Yes.
Roundabout. And I did have one other question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
When was the last time that the airport saw resurfacing like it's getting?
I don't know that I could tell you the specific date that that happened, but I don't know that it's happened within the last twenty years.
That's sort of what I guessed, yeah. Probably overdue. Thank you. Any more questions? Nope? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will be moving on to ordinance number sixty-nine thirty-one. This is an ordinance providing the, for the acquisition of eminent domain, a property located near the adjacent to Auburn Way South within the city of Auburn, Washington for roadway widening improvements for project number CP sixteen twenty-two. Auburn Way South widening, Hemlock Street Southeast to Poplar Street Southeast, declaring public use and necessity and providing for severe, severe, I'm going to get stuck on this, severability and an effective date.
And if I can provide one clarification, we've skipped one item.
Oh, I did.
That's fine, we can do a half of this one.
Sorry.
Just as long as we go back to that other item.
Sure, we can. All right, so then we'll go back to, do you want to do the ordinance or do we want to go back to engineering? Do you want to do the engineering? Okay, we'll do that one then.
Either one is fine.
Okay. Well, since he's here, we'll go ahead and get started on the engineering services.
And then we're also going to bring up Brian Mondrak, who is our Utilities Engineering Manager to help with his presentation.
Fantastic.
Well, here I am, again, Jacob Sweeting, City Engineer for the record. And Ryan Mondrak, Utilities Engineering Manager. So the next item that we're going to talk are the Design Standards Update. And once again, I'm going to give a little background about the engineering design standards and what they are and why we're here to talk about them tonight. So the Auburn City Code, Chapter Twelve Oh Four, establishes standards that all public works contracts and all work out in the public right-of-way have to be built to. The engineering design standards are what these standards are. The code says that the city engineer will develop and implement, publish these standards, but will come and consult with the city council on items that have a broad citywide implication or policy-type issues. So the engineering design standards themselves include the design manual. It also includes the Surface Water Management Manual, which is actually the Department of Ecology manual supplemented by our own standards for stormwater management. So the most recent edition of the engineering design standards was published last year in June of 2023. And the next edition, we are shooting towards publishing next month. For the last several years, we seem to be publishing these about once a year, but that hasn't always been the case. Basically, they are published on an as-needed basis when we recognize that some standards need to change or we need to address some sort of new technology or regulations that are out there or to address questions or issues that the public or the development community have regarding the standards. So with that, I will start with the first standard. There's quite a few changes are going to happen, but like I said, tonight, we're just going to talk about some of the larger citywide changes that would have some broader implications or are related to policy. So the first one that I will talk about before I hand it over to Ryan are going to be some standards related to retaining walls. Right now, in the design standards, the standards do not preclude private development projects from constructing walls in the public right-of-way. They also require that retaining walls that are holding back private property are owned by the private property or by the developer. So what that has created is a situation where we have development projects actually building walls that are in the public right-of-way that are owned by private property, which is not desirable for many reasons, but for the most part, it's an administrative nightmare. We have to issue right-of-way use permits that are only good for five years. They have to come back and renew those every five years. That can be a headache for the developer to have to go through that process and then it usually gets handed over to the agency way, which then becomes something that has to be managed by them as well. So the new standard that's being proposed is to require private development to place those walls outside the public right-of-way and also not allow those walls to support the public right-of-way, except through deviation. The deviation would be a process that the developer would submit a series of information that shows why, proposing why they think it'd be okay to have that wall in the public right-of-way and then we could issue conditions associated with that deviation, which is a much more straightforward process usually than what results from the current standard. Am I meant to have the picture on this one? Wish I did, retaining wall. Didn't work out.
We can visualize it.
Yeah. So now we're going to move on to standards related to our water utility. I'll let Ryan pick up on that.
Yes, we got a couple of water, water utility design, design standard updates we want to discuss. I also don't have photos, so it's a little boring. So the first one is with respect to water main upsizing. And the purpose of this design standard update is to create a more equitable approach to water main upsizing, placing that focus more on pressure, demand, and velocity constraints. The current design standards require that, or is, is, the current design status for water main upsizing is a little rigid. And on the topic, it states that for any new water service connection or an upsize, uh, upsize to that existing service, that, uh, that activity requires a water main that you're connecting to, to be upsized if it doesn't already meet the minimum pipe size requirements that are established in the design standards. The proposed change to this section makes water main upsizing a bit more fluid. And, um, it adds that pressure, demand, and pipe velocity focus to it. So it now states that for any new water service connection or an upsize to an existing service, the water main upsizing is required when the water main does not meet the minimum pipe size requirements as established in the design standards or it fails to meet the minimum pressure and fire flow requirements or velocity constraints. This change will make the, uh, main sizing, main upsizing a bit more equitable as it focuses more on the individual impacts that a development has on the water system network. So the next one we have is water main velocities. The purpose of this update is to also place that focus more on pressure, demand, and velocity constraints. The current design standards limit pipe velocities under all water main, or water demand conditions. The proposed change allows for pipe velocities to be exceeded during short duration events such as for fighting fires. The proposed change aligns our design standards more with the Department of Health Guidelines for Water System Designs. And we also anticipate that'll re, it'll reduce some inconsistencies in water main sizing requirements. The next one we have is private fire hydrants. The purpose of this design standard update is to place the responsibility of maintaining water mains and fire hydrants, fire hydrants that are installed on private property for fire protection to be on the property owner. The current design standards indicate that all water mains are publicly owned. The proposed design standard has fire hydrants and water mains that are installed solely for the purpose of fire protection, that it will be provided privately owned. This change will reduce city maintenance time spent on infrastructure and place ownership of that system on private property since that system is only benefiting, is the only benefiting, um, that property and nobody else.
I've gotta ask a question on that one because when I think of the services that we provide as a city, we've got to think about the people who could be affected by that, right? And so when we think of, you know, if there's gonna be private development, we want to, um, put certain onus on the developer and the property owner, which in some ways makes sense. But I think my concern with this particular change is that if I am a renter and I'm going to go rent in a building that is private property, would that be something where it would be on the property owner to be maintaining that hydrant? Because I can tell you, as a 20-year-old renter, I would never think to inquire of my landlord, "Hey, are you keeping this safe in case my neighbors have a fire?" And I would be concerned that if we leave that up to private enterprise, that we're putting a dynamic in place that could have downstream effects that we might not like.
Many of the instances where this would apply would not be in, um, an apartment building. It would be in a commercial development where you have to wrap a water liner around the building for, um, fire protection services. Most of the time, um, you don't have a, you know, you don't have a series of buildings that are on one pers, on one specific property that we wouldn't be able to have that fire protection from the public street. So most of this time, most of these instances are, or occur within industry or, uh, industrial development, commercial developments where, you know, a series of water mains that are on that private property that are specifically there to fight for, for fire protection.
And then I want to add one other clarification to what Ryan said, just to make it really clear. This is where the main is extended and the only thing on that main is a fire hydrant. There's no domestic service, there's no other services coming off of that line. And so that line is just there to serve that fire hydrant, that fire hydrant only. And as he said, these are all gonna be in those commercial situations. It's very rare that you're gonna have a situation where you're gonna have an extension of a fire hydrant line in a multifamily situation that doesn't also have a domestic purpose.
Councilmember Amir.
So Element Homeowner Association, and technically, we have two fire hydrant there. So that's mean now you're telling me it'll be the Homeowner Association responsibility for these two. We have two on our side and one in the other. So kinda, it's the new change that mean we, the Homeowner Association, will be responsible upon maintaining these or?
I, I don't know your exist, your exact, um, situation where you live, um, but it wouldn't be for existing.
Oh, well, not for, okay. Will not be for existing, but will be for new, uh, any complex, a new one. That's mean they'll go, if they have Homeowner Association, will go under the existing.
So just to clarify. So the water lines that are in the street, so if it's a public street, public water line, those fire hydrants are still the cities. So this does not affect all fire hydrants. This only affects hydrants that are put in specifically on a private property for a commercial development typically, uh, that is only there to serve that one property.
So for us, it's inside the property there. Our, uh, we can talk about it later to show you because for us, it's not in the street.
Right.
It's in our property.
But that line also has other things coming off of there, which is the service lines. So typically in an apartment complex or an HOA-type situation, those lines are going to have other things coming off there besides just the fire hydrant. And so it's not going to be a fire service line. It's going to be a city line that the city owns, the city has easements for. This change doesn't affect anything that's already built and already under city ownership. This is not changing any of our current city ownership.
Councilmember Baldwin.
I'm wondering if it would be beneficial if, with the clarity of the commercial, uh, element that Director Gob mentioned, if we could maybe tweak this particular proposed standard to incorporate that? I think that would give me a lot more confidence in supporting it.
I, I think it does. It's so, what we have written here is a summary of, of what the design standard states. Otherwise, it'd be pretty long.
Sure.
I'd have to go back and look at exactly what it says, but based on how the other design standards are written. So, uh, you have all these different sections that apply in various ways. And so the way that, that section is written is when a, when a, uh, a main is installed on that property, that's when it, it, um, becomes the, the situation where it could potentially be privately owned. So it just depends on the situation and then how the standards are, are structured because various sections of the standards apply all over the place. We'd have to go back and look at how it's written exactly.
Well, and so the purpose of the discussion is to consult and get input. So that input will be considered as we work through the design standards. There are potentially some code updates that are associated with some of these standards that would be discussed at a later date as well. So gonna be some more details when the discussion happens.
I was gonna say, if we can, if you want to do it as a takeaway item to go back and double-check, that's fine. But, huh, I would love an update on what you find, when you compare it to the full written.
Yeah, it's, it's very specific to, um, lines that are on private property as well as, um, you know, cause when you have, even when you have HOA situations that, that where the streets are all private when that happens, that those would be, um, still considered as a single-family residential unit or area, there's, there's streets. Those would all be.
Excluded?
Excluded. So, and, and still can, still be considered public water.
As long as there's language that those residential areas are excluded.
Okay.
We'll feel better.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, and then lastly, we have hydraulic analysis. So the purpose of this design standard update is to aid in identifying water system impacts through a more detailed analysis of the development and establish a more uniform approach to analyzing the impacts of those developments. The current design standard indicates that developers are responsible for providing hydraulic modeling that, um, demonstrating that the system, the water system, meets fire flow requirements. When requested, the city can provide that modeling, that hydraulic modeling for them at a cost to the developer. Uh, the challenge with this approach is that when this is requested, we are in a situation where we have to kind of figure out those modeling needs for them. So the proposed design change replaces the term hydraulic modeling and inserts the term hydraulic analysis. Hydraulic analysis is a more detailed analysis of the impacts that a development has on the water system. And we can still provide the water modeling for them when requested at a cost, but the hydraulic analysis provides parameters for the developers to work from and gives us more information, making it easier for the city to determine the hydraulic modeling needs. And then also, when the developer wants to, wants to perform the hydraulic analysis on their own, uh, there's additional guidance for actually completing that analysis. So that is, uh, the last of the, the water ones. As mentioned, or as Jacob mentioned earlier, some of these design standard updates require some city code updates, which we'll be bringing to council at a later date. We're still working on those. So if you have any questions on anything else?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to, uh, our next item. The city is in the process of negotiating an acquisition of property rights needed for city project CP 1622. It's Auburn Way South Hemlock to Poplar Widening Project. The ordinance number 6931 declares public use in necessity regarding the project and authorizes condemnation action for properties of which negotiations have not yet led to an agreement and closing. Uh, this project's gonna widen Auburn Way South from Hemlock to Poplar Street, including two vehicle travel lanes in each direction. A center turn lane or median in the roadway pri, widening will connect to the roundabout recently constructed by the Auburn School District with the reconstruction of Chinook Elementary School. The project will also construct a new 10-foot-wide sidewalk, street lighting, surface water management, transit stop improvements, noise walls, and enhanced pedestrian crossing and realignment of Poplar Street Southeast. The project construction is planned to start later this year.
And Jacob Sweeting is here to talk you through what we're actually doing on the project and what the condemnation ordinance is actually covering.
Hello again. Jacob Sweeting, City Engineer. As was mentioned, uh, here to discuss ordinance 6931 and then more particularly the project that it applies to, Capital Project CP 1622. So, uh, project 1622, the Auburn Way South Widening Project. It, this ordinance will establish the public, uh, it will establish that, uh, the project itself is a public use. Uh, it will also establish that the acquisition of certain property rights, including the ordinance, are necessary to complete the project. And it will also establish that acquisition of the, these property rights are in the best interest of the city and the public. Ultimately, the condemnation ordinance, or the ordinance itself, uh, authorizes acquisition of these property rights through condemnation if needed, uh, with just compensation paid to the owners. So I want to go into the background of this Capital Project CP 1622. And it really, I mean, it, it starts a long time ago. Uh, but really, uh, the idea for improvements to the Auburn Way South or State Route 164 corridor started in 2009 when the state, uh, produced the State Route 164 corridor planning study. Uh, the study identified that there, uh, was significant congestion points along the corridor. Uh, there was also areas along the corridor that had little to no pedestrian access and had safety concerns, uh, related to pedestrians walking along the corridor or trying to cross the corridor. And then it also identified that, uh, there were, um, issues with, uh, event traffic or, or peak traffic, um, along the corridor due to different, different uses. So the corridor study, uh, came up with a proposed solution, which pretty much was widening the road to include at least, uh, two travel lanes in each direction, uh, adding sidewalks, adding, um, different type of safety improvements, uh, as well as, uh, accommodating transit by putting in bus pullouts. And then, uh, presented some kind of segmented plan towards this. The, the study itself went all the way out to Academy Drive. So from SR 18 to Academy Drive. And it recognized that to try to improve the entire corridor in one project or in one timeframe was just not gonna be possible. Uh, so since this study was published, uh, we have been working, uh, the city's been working with the state and, uh, with others, including the tribe, to start implementing, uh, projects that address some of these needs. And we really focus on areas, uh, where some of that heaviest congestion and some of those, uh, safety issues were the most prominent and where we can also get some funding to address those issues. So this map shows a segment of Auburn Way South SR 164 between M Street Southeast and Poplar Street. So dead center of the map, uh, is the Muckshue Resort and Casino area. So starting from left to right, I'm gonna talk about different projects that we've implemented, uh, in the last, uh, in, in recent years to address some of these needs identified in that, in that Wash Dot study. So just, uh, this year, uh, we're completing the installation of sidewalks along the south side of Auburn Way South between Howard Road or 17th Street or the bridge over our street, uh, over to the Muckshue Plaza. Uh, that also included a pedestrian, a raised pedestrian crossing, uh, on Howard Road, the Howard Road departure from Auburn Way South. In, uh, 2019, uh, we completed sidewalks on the opposite side of the road. So that's the north side of the road between, uh, the bridge over our street and approximately the Muckshue Plaza signal. Uh, moving to the right, uh, to know, uh, it's also, it's not on, on Auburn Way South, but definitely helps provide pedestrian access to Auburn Way South. And that is the Riverwalk Sidewalks Project, which, uh, was just completed. And that constructed new pavement, sidewalk, street lighting on Riverwalk Drive from Howard Road up to, um, Auburn Way South at the signal. In, uh, 2019, actually it was about 2018, we completed Capital Project 1218, which included, uh, widening the segment of Auburn Way South, uh, adjacent to the Muckshue Casino. Uh, that also added 10-foot wide sidewalks and transit facilities and street lighting and other safety and access improvements along that stretch of the corridor. Uh, moving further east, uh, Capital Project 1118, 1119 was completed in 2015. That was, uh, a project that widened the road once again, uh, this time between Dogwood and Hemlock Street. It also constructed sidewalks on both sides of the road, installed street lighting, and installed a new traffic signal at the intersection of Auburn Way South and Hemlock. And then, uh, most recently, uh, in 2022, uh, it was a project, actually, this one was led by the Auburn School District. And as part of their reconstruction of Chinook Elementary, uh, the school district worked to, uh, improve a small portion of Auburn Way South in front of the school, uh, which also included constructing, uh, street lighting, sidewalks, and a roundabout. That'll be the first, uh, dual-lane roundabout in the city of Auburn. And then we get to the purple section on the right, which is the Capital Project, uh, associated with this ordinance, CP 1622. This, uh, project here, I'm gonna zoom in now a little bit more. The Chinook Elementary Roundabout is in the dead center of this map. This map, from left to right, on the left, uh, would be the intersection of Hemlock Street. On the right, uh, would be Poplar Street. And this is actually a rendering that shows what the project improvements, uh, will leave behind when done. And I will zoom in a little bit more so we can see some of those, what they entail. So, uh, once again, the road will, roadway will, will be widened, uh, on both sides of the roundabout. Right now, the roundabout is functioning more like a single-lane roundabout because it's only fed by one lane on each direction. Or it tapers, tapers down to one lane pretty quickly. So this project adds, uh, another lane. So there'll be two lanes in each direction between Hemlock and the roundabout. Then two lanes in each direction between the roundabout out to just about the, uh, curve. It's gonna taper down to one lady and just as you come around the curve. Uh, as well as a center turn lane. In some sections, this will actually be a median island to, to provide, um, uh, some management related to the approaches on the roundabout. And then the 10-foot sidewalks and the street lighting. As you head further east around the curve, um, another distinctive improvement associated with the project is to realign Poplar Street from its current configuration, uh, which exits right at the, uh, departure of the curve. And we will be relining it to the new location shown here. That will improve, um, visibility. here. That will improve visibility for cars leaving and entering Poplar Street, as well as improve pedestrian sight distance at the crossing. And then, a little bit further to the east, is actually a pedestrian crossing with a refuge island that will be enhanced with signage and flashing beacons. It's intentionally set at a location that only has one lane in each direction to reduce the number of conflicts that pedestrian vehicles might have. And it's also set to be right adjacent to two bus stops that will be relocated to be right next to that crossing, to encourage crossing, use of the crossing by the adjacent multifamily land uses. And then, once again, the 10-foot sidewalks and street lighting continue all the way, actually beyond Poplar Street here to, I believe, what is Redwood Court on that next intersection down. So, the proposed roadway that we saw there, it is a widening of the current footprint. And because it's widening the current footprint, we simply can't do it within the current property rights, within the current right-of-way that we have now. So, the roadway has, while it's been designed to try to minimize the property impacts, it's just simply unavoidable. And to provide this need, we end up needing property rights from 29 different properties owned by 22 different parties. And those rights vary from being permanent right-of-way acquisitions to being permanent easements. An example, one of those easements would be a sight distance easement that is needed around the curve, so that the property there isn't built up with vertical improvements or vegetation that could obstruct the view of people trying to turn out of Poplar Street or pedestrians using the crossing there. The, there's also a large number of temporary construction easements. The temporary construction easements are needed so that the widened roadway can be connected to the adjacent properties and any impacts to the adjacent properties restored back to the condition they were. This would also be things like connecting driveways, making sure that they are regraded, and so they can continue to be used as they were before. So, as of last week, when we were putting together this draft ordinance, this presentation, we had reached agreements with 11 of the 22 different parties. Two agreements were tentative at that time, and then the nine property owners and approximately 12-plus, I believe, properties listed in the draft ordinance now, discussions were happening, but had gotten to a point where they had slowed. So, that's why they're included in the draft ordinance now. Since then, we actually have reached tentative agreements with two of the properties that are actually listed in the draft ordinance, so we will continue to work towards closing. If they do close and are fully done before the ordinance is considered, they would come off, but the closing process itself usually takes longer, so more likely, they will still be retained on the ordinance. It's also important to note at this time that we don't have any property owners that are flat-out saying, "No, I don't want it. Go away," and are contesting this. Discussions are happening with all the property owners. We're really down to the details of things like making sure they get adequate compensation to move their signs that are out in front of their businesses, or making sure that different parties that are on their titles are going to sign off on the reconveyance or the transfer of the property rights to the city. Some of these properties are condominium associations with multiple, they have to go back to their association leadership, and they have to have considerations and voting. And then, others of these are, you know, there's multiple parties that own the properties, so there's discussions that are happening there between the parties to make sure they can all line and come and sign and move forward. So, I just wanted to make it clear that the negotiations and the discussions do continue, and they seem to be moving forward well. But ultimately, we do need to move forward with the ordinance to authorize the condemnation, which would ultimately lead to filing condemnation petitions, really because, in this, in the case of this project, we have federal funding. We have a grant for over $3 million. That was awarded to us by the Petersham Regional Council for construction of this project. And we have a deadline to obligate and authorize those construction funds and move forward, and we can't do so until we have all the property rights in hand. It's called right-of-way certification. So, once we have right-of-way certification, we can move forward and start with the construction process. But if we don't employ every means possible to try to do so in a timely manner, we could ultimately be delayed to a point where we could lose that grant funding, and that project itself could be in jeopardy. So, with that, just an overview of the current project schedule. This month and next month, we will continue negotiating with the property owners and pursuing closing of the properties with whom we've reached agreements. We will be making what we call final and best offers in February that will hopefully lead to resolution and agreement. Any properties that haven't closed yet, in March and April, any properties that haven't reached an agreement, we would be filing a condemnation petition. And that, once we file those petitions, if needed, that the negotiations didn't result in an agreement and closing, it ultimately leads to a court date or a couple court dates being set. Right now, the current timeframes look like it's about a six-month timeframe, which puts those court dates starting in August. If the courts start, if those dates happen in August, then we would potentially move towards right-of-way certification in October in authorizing those construction grant funds, which would allow us to move forward and advertise for construction bids in November, and eventually start construction about this time next year, with construction being complete the following year in 2026. So, the next steps, on February 5th, there will be potential consideration and adoption of ordinance on the council meeting. And in the meantime, we will continue working. We have a whole team of consultant negotiators and experts that are working to negotiate and working on different administrative settlements, trying to use every single tool we can to reach, you know, a settlement to avoid having to go to condemnation. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Questions, counsel. Councilmember Ball.
Thank you. So, with different capital projects that I'm familiar with happening in the greater, you know, King County, Seattle area, one of the things that I've seen that is sometimes made available is if there's going to be a project that's happening over, you know, taking longer than a month, for example, that there's sometimes business impact mitigation plans. And so, for those businesses that are along this project path, do we have anything in mind for those that would be part of the capital project planning?
So, what we focus on in this project and other capital projects is how can we minimize the impacts of the business? The first priority is to maintain access and try to reduce the construction duration time. Sometimes, that does mean some short-term closures of the roadways, but we always try to do that in times that we've coordinated with the property owners to try to minimize those impacts. So, yeah, it starts with having a design that's going to reduce the number of impacts, then having coordination, communication with the property owners, the business owners, as we approach construction. And then, we're writing requirements into our contract specifications, which spell out what those requirements are. So, while there is going to be construction traffic, there's going to be some delays at time. Every attempt is made to keep the access to those businesses and definitely to the residences open.
Do those conversations go through the project manager for the capital project, or is there a different person who handles that coordination?
Well, we all end up involved with the discussion, but the project manager, who is ultimately the first line of contact for that. So, the project manager's going to have those discussions with the team that's designing the plans and putting the specifications together. And then, ultimately, you know, myself and Ingrid were involved with those discussions. And, you know, at times, you'll hear us come and even talk with you all and talk to you about some closures that need to happen, because we just can't simply avoid it. Like when we closed Riverwalk Drive, we had to close the road to have that built in a way that was safe and in a way that minimized the impacts ultimately to the public. So, yeah, we have a lot of discussions, usually led by the project manager. It just depends how much they ask for.
Any more questions? Councilmember Amir.
Can you say comment? Because there is some business there. There'll be restaurants. Sometimes, if I see it in Tuailla when they have the side and they close it, actually, they get more customer, because the worker, they be cutting going there to get the food. So, may, it would go like, kinda, maybe there is risk, but I could see it more, they may get more customer, especially there is burger place over there. Maybe when we have the good road, we'll be able to go.
That's a very good point. And those discussions are happening now, and the needs of each business is very, they're very different, like you said. So, we're working with, there's a veterinary clinic, there's a couple dentist offices. Those needs for those offices are to provide access during the day when they have patients and clients coming to see them. And then, there's, you know, like the, there's, there is at least a couple restaurants there.
They get more customer.
Right.
Because walk inside from Mukshu to, it's, I, it's...
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
And I hope that's the case.
I seen it in Tuailla when I walked them.
I was going to say, I bring it up thinking more to what I saw with sound transit, what they provided along MLK Way, pardon me, MLK Junior Way South in Seattle, where they had some special programs, both to support improved communication between the sound transit projects, as well as different grants for making sure that if those businesses were impacted by a decrease in their revenue, they had some grant funding that was available. Now, I understand Washington State law doesn't allow city budget to go to those things, but because this is going to have federal funds associated to it, I didn't know if that was part of our conversation as far as making sure that those businesses don't wind up closing as a result of the work that we're doing. Other areas where we see that happen would be along the waterfront in Seattle, likewise, Queen Anne area, and other places like that. So, I just want to make sure that we're covering our bases and, you know, making our own improvements, but not leaving anyone behind. Ingrid.
No, I just wanted to mention, valid points, the businesses that we spoke to out there very much welcomed this project. They, the congestion that happens out there and the lack of access in some ways, they have been very supportive. You're still going to do what we can to minimize those impacts, but as far as I know, there's no legal, financial incentives or payment through either state funds or federal fund that could come from that.
And under state law, a payment such as that could be considered gifting of public funds, which would be illegal under state law.
That's why I said expressly that there is a state law that says it couldn't come from the city's budget, but there are other mechanisms that are sometimes available when there's concern about, about the business community, so.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Councilmember Amir.
All right. Well, that concludes this study session, but I want to compliment the presenters. Great, I know a lot of work goes through here. We do appreciate it. And I want to congratulate Councilmember Tracy Taylor for sharing her very first... And with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.